Okay, seven o'clock, call meeting door. What do you want to stand? I pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Butler?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Lipscomb?
Here.
Obrich?
Smith?
Here.
Thrash?
Here.
Vincente?
Here.
Six members present, one absent.
Okay. Beth is absent, she's out of town for work, so. Okay, first item is the minutes from the November 20th council meeting. Is anyone, has everyone here received their copy of the minutes for that meeting? Does anyone have any questions or comments on the minutes? Okay, hearing done, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as a. Fisher?
Make a motion.
Second, J.C., take a roll call, Beth.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincente?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, the minutes for November 20th meeting have been approved. Okay, I'm just gonna throw this out now at the beginning while everybody can kind of think about it, really, we don't have any old business that I'm aware of, and this is kind of like our new business, but just something for council to think about. The first meeting in January, the last meeting in December will be Beth's last meeting, and she is the current president pro temp of council. So that position will have to be replaced after the first of the year by the new council. So this is a council decision on who they want as president pro temp. So just kind of in the meantime, kicking around between all of you to see who you would like to recommend, or just, and that will also include the two new council people will be voting on that also. So I just wanted to bring that out, so that everybody is aware that that will have to be done at the first meeting in January, so that in case I'm not here, somebody is prepared to step in. Okay, that's all I have there. To my understanding, we have the correspondence that I was aware of, so we'll go straight to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Jim. Mayor's report, been a busy two weeks as usual, and our city's getting ready for Christmas. I've mentioned it before, the great success of Light Up Night and having the skating rink, and I've had a lot of comments in this past two weeks from people who really enjoyed having their kids able to go out and skate, so thank you again, chamber, thank you to council for what we donated toward making that possible. And again, like I said, the past two weeks, I've just had so much positive input about that. And this time of year, I think, causes us all to think and be more reflective, consider the many blessings we have, and how much I appreciate our city family. And I got a couple of things I want to mention that happened this past week, and to show just how much they care about our community. First off, I had a phone call last week from a young lady, and she was telling me how much the gentleman on our street department went out of their way to help a citizen last week. It seems there was a situation where a young lady had been ill and passed, and she had two collie dogs, four collie dogs. They needed to be rehomed because the owner had died. One of the collies was rehomed to an elderly lady in our town. Well, the dog had not been with the lady but a few days, and it didn't know where it was yet. Well, when the leaf guys came up to pick up the leaves on that street, she brought the dog out on the leash to see what was going on. The dog panicked, pulled her down four times, and then it ran away. Our guys immediately went to her aid, they helped her up, they offered to call the EMT squad, but her worries about her dog, that she's only had a few days. Our guys went in the woods, and after looking, they found that dog, returned it to the new owner. They even stopped the next day to check and see if she was okay. And I think that is absolutely extraordinary, and I'm so pleased, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna name the guys who did that. I want to extend my thanks and our recognition to Mark Berry, Brian Coleman, Will Berkey, Mike Stewart, Jerry Abate, Dawn McLeod, and Darren Pitlack for their extraordinary service that day. I think that deserves a round of applause. And as if that weren't enough, we had another citizen in town, Mr. Jeffers, who our utility department knew always paid his bills on the last day, they knew exactly what he paid. And Tiffany Burley in the utility department had noticed he had not come in, and Anita, they had not paid his bill yet. So they checked the water usage at his house and noticed it had not been used since like November 7th. They sent the police down, police could not get anyone to answer the door, they then called the fire department, fire department had to break down the door, and unfortunately they found Mr. Jeffers deceased. But they went to extraordinary lengths to check on this man, and it just reminds me again how lucky we are to have people who really care, go out of their way to check on our citizens. And I'm just gonna ask everybody in our town, especially during this season, please check on your neighbors if you think somebody doesn't have anyone. And as this Christmas season plays out, please check on those that don't have the family, neighbors, and we are a community, let's look out for each other. So I really appreciate all the extraordinary effort by our departments, thank you so much. I also want to commend Eric, who's gonna give us a report about the turkey trot, correct? Okay, and also mention the live activity is set up tonight and Thursday night from six to eight on the courthouse steps, maybe give those kids a thank you for what you're doing, they're reminding us the reason for this season. So I'd like to say thank you very much to everybody, and that's pretty much it, Jim.
Okay, thank you. Everybody have any questions or comments?
The management letter for the audit, is there a reason council hasn't gotten ours yet?
Linda, honestly, I do not know, but.
Okay, it's addressed to mayor and council, and.
You would have done that a long time ago, like before the audit was even approved, so.
Yeah. Do you have a particular concern, Linda, is there a particular concern?
Well, I think there are things in there that council should be aware of, and if it's addressed to mayor and council, then council should receive it.
Well, I wish you'd have called me earlier, I could have looked and asked you.
Well, I'm asking you now, so.
I don't, I don't have that information right here, but I can find it.
No, I don't need you to find it, I just want to know if there's a reason we never received it.
Absolutely not.
Okay, okay.
I think you did receive it.
As I thought it would.
It was sent.
I asked for mine, but.
Everyone done it.
The other thing, I got a phone call today, I mean, I don't know if you're aware, but out of 13 towns to retire in Ohio, St. Clairsville was number four, rated number four of the best places in Ohio to retire.
Well, that's wonderful.
Yeah, I thought, that's pretty, yeah, it was very exciting, there's a video and everything, so.
No, that's very nice.
Yeah.
And again, I think the fact we have such wonderful community spirit certainly has something to do with it. And I also want to commend Wendy in the chamber, the parade was awesome, I enjoyed being in it. I think we said enough prayers, the rain passed us, went apparently to Akron, what's the name of the stadium in Pittsburgh where the Steelers play, because I guess they had a rain delay.
Akron.
Yeah, Akron.
For two hours.
But we had a great parade, just a couple raindrops, and it was very, very nice, so. That's it, James.
Linda, on 8/29, send to us.
We got an email on 8/29.
8/29?
From Annette.
Yeah, so you should have had it. Is it the one that I gave you?
It is, um. I just found it, believe me.
It's from Annette, the original.
It's from Annette, and it is, um, shoot, I just had it.
Right there.
Yeah, from Julian and Groob.
Is it the same one that I had given you?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, then I apologize.
That's okay.
It was emailed.
Okay, I didn't receive it.
Any other questions for the mayor or comments? Okay, hearing done, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, James.
Go on to the service director, Jerry Greenwood.
Good evening, council. Couple pieces of legislation for us tonight, we've got 202340, the second reading for the GIS position, 202342, the temporary appropriations for 2024, that's an emergency, that's the temporary budget for the first quarter of next year. And then 202343, ODOT shale, our local shale roads grant, an emergency for that, because that grant is due next month, too. Only a couple meetings this year, or since last meeting. Projects, I know Beth had asked about the Ask Me contract, I have a meeting with them this Wednesday to finalize the formatting and get that signed, so that's done. Water nodes, we're up to 266 for the year now. Route line, Route 40 water line running towards Plaza West, still working on that one, going through, had a couple issues with some locates, but we think we've got it settled now. Water distribution project, still waiting on to remove the old hydrants, but we've got them bagged, they're working on Walnut Street in the south side of East Maine, doing sidewalks and driveways on the north side of East Maine. Had several comments about the work the contractor has been doing with the sidewalks, so that seems to be working out pretty well. Got the generator pad pool poured for the Ohio EPA water plant backup generator that we got the grant for for that. Also had the Christmas parade. I did talk to the county GIS operator, there is only one person in that department, so they would not be able to share services with us, and they make about $80,000 a year, so we're in line with what we're asking for with that. Upcoming projects, still doing leaf pickup, the machine was out last week to make up for when it was broke down the week before. The machine is now put away, we are doing paper bag pickup still, so all anybody has to do is call the city building and give us an address, and we'll get that taken care of. Still waiting on our two HVAC units, working on easements for the distribution project still, the EFOL storelift station, we had to replace some floats on there, again, that station is about four years old, and it's really starting to show its age. The grant for the sinkhole was submitted, the grant for the bypass road in junior sports was submitted, we're looking at doing some additional culverts in some spots, water nodes, still working on that, the water line, doing code reds for areas when they call in utilities, and trying to let the public know what's going on, door hangers, code red, and other issues or anything that pops up, we try and work with them to see. Still got several projects, working on standard details, inflow infiltration plan, any water tank work that we've got going department wise, electric department pretty much the same, pole replacement, service work, disconnects, street lights, tree trimming, meter reading, I think we've done some services in there, too. Water, wastewater, smoke test and letters were sent out, we're working with the citizens that call in, we've had people actually fix their stuff already, so that's very much appreciated, that gets us into the good graces of the EPA. Still doing the water nodes, as we mentioned, cameras, sewer lines, water line work where we can, we did a new section of water line that we had a break on Martha Drive, it was originally gonna be in the water distribution project, but had to get cut out, but where the water line break was under somebody's driveway, so we went ahead and fixed it so that we wouldn't have to tear up the driveway to fix the water line break, and then tear it up again to fix, or to put in new water lines, so we just went ahead and put the water lines in. It was only a short section, it was, you know, a couple, uh, distribution project, Route 40 project, we're still fixing curb boxes when we have to, we're down to five hydrants out of service, and I think the majority of them are gonna be replaced in the remaining distribution project. Water line breaks, they're climbing this year, 42 total for the year, we've had 18 of them that are ours, 23 of them that were accounting to the distribution work, and then one from the I-70 work that was done. Listation repairs, we talked about that, street department, leaves, we mentioned that, paper bags, please, they're starting to patch potholes when they can, doing some street repair, still looking at culverts where they can, and cameraing culverts, the mowers have been put away, we're actually looking at bringing out the snow equipment, so, yeah, it's that time. Rec center, we had our junior rec design kickoff meeting, and then Eric has an announcement, I don't know if you want to do that now, or if you want him to do that.
Do it now.
Do it under your.
I was gonna defer my report to Eric since he's here.
That works, we'll just do it then.
We talked earlier.
Police department, want to thank the guys for coming out and helping with the parade, they always do a great job with that, and want to thank chief for donating his time for the turkey trot, too. And that's everything.
Good, Jeremy, thank you. I'll just kind of throw this out first, I think the guys from the street department are to be commended also, and whoever worked on the day of the parade, because once that parade was over, they were on them streets, and they had, the streets went down, cleaned up, and it looked like there was never an issue, so.
Yeah.
They did a real, real fine job.
It was fast, one of my judges. Tell me to pack that out, too.
Okay, does anybody have any comments or questions for Jeremy?
I just have one question, because I had a phone call today. I had a resident ask what the issue is on Main Street where they got three notifications for water breaks since Thursday.
Three water line breaks?
Yeah.
It's just the age of our lines, these are, the old lines are there, as they're digging through to put the new lines next to the old lines, the only thing holding our lines together is the dirt, I mean, literally, it's the dirt, so when you disturb the dirt, it breaks and the water lines break, and they fixed it once, then they had to take out a 10-foot section of pipe, I stopped on Friday on my day off and watched them do that, and then the one that broke this morning was about 10 to, what, 20 feet down further to the west of that same section, so it's that entire section aligned. We're not, we're really not trying to plan it, we've got other things we want the contractor to do other than fix the water lines and the things, and our guys, but that's, that's it, it's just, it's rotten luck, and then there's nothing we can do but apologize to people for it, and say, these water lines are well overdue, and if it would have been done 40 years ago, we probably wouldn't be having these problems.
Any other comments, Johnny?
Yeah, Jeremy, like on the water lines, how do we treat like the house line? Do we have long leaks on house lines?
Yes, we do, and we've got some galvanized ones, too. Now, the problem is the Ohio EPA, and the EPA has money for that, but it's not on an individual basis. What they want us to do is to go through and identify all of them in the entire project, and then come back, make a project, and they will help fund, they'll replace the complete service line from the corp, or actually, the curb, we are replacing from the corp stop, which is where it connects to our main lines, to the curb box where we have a shut-off for there. We're doing that all in this project. Anything from the curb box into the house is the responsibility of homeowner. So once we've identified that we've got galvanized or lead, but we don't think we have any lead, but, you know, we actually even found one that was a steel line, which was very interesting, because it was almost rusted completely gone, too. We're identifying them, we're gonna create a project after this project's done, submit it to the EPA to get funded for it. The issue is now we're going on, instead of being in the right of way that we have for access for utilities already, now we're getting individual easements to each property owner's house, to go on their property, take and dig up their property, replace the line, and then go through it, so.
Place the line how far? To their house?
They'll do it all the way to the house, into the house to the meter if it's a galvanized line.
From the EPA or whatever.
If it's a galvanized or a lead line. We don't think we have lead, but we know we've got galvanized. Now, if it's a copper line, shouldn't be too many problems, but if something comes up and we notice a leak, what we've been doing is saying, okay, you've got a copper service here, here it is, here's your contractor that can repair this for you, because that's your responsibility as the homeowner, from the curb box to the house.
Now, do we have long leaks on house lines right now where that contributes to our?
Yes, we probably do, because that's part of the issue is, if you go to a lot of other areas, their meter is in a meter pit, out right by the main line, so the city's responsibility is only this much, which is still ours, to the curb box, but from the curb box in is all on metered water. So if it doesn't run through the meter, we have no accounting for it, and it's considered lost. So if something's leaking between there and there, but we do try, when something comes up or we find something, we work with the homeowner, notify them that, hey, here's what's going on, we're gonna have to shut this service off, this needs to be repaired, and then keep moving, but I have no doubt that there's a lot of them, just from seeing the, I think we've, what, eight, eight or 10 galvanized lines that we found just on this section on the northern and south side of East Maine. And that's not even getting into town where you've got the older buildings, you know, coming through, we have no idea what we're gonna find up there. We found one building today that has five different taps that all combine into one line to go into the building for one meter. We have no idea or reason why it was done that way, but if it is, so we're gonna correct it now, and just do one tap.
Does it, oh, I'm sorry, does it appear that it's been there, been that way for a long time?
Yes, yes.
You're talking, go ahead, is he really, he's in the middle of questions?
I guess this is the utility microwave, go ahead.
Regarding the GIS position, have you looked into the OGRIP program?
No.
Okay.
We actually already have the ArcGIS system as part of our system, that we've already bought the software and things for, so it's already part of the system, we just need somebody to help us manage it.
Well, this is, this is the organization that would help with doing this.
We don't need it set up, we need somebody to go out, shoot the stuff in the field, and do these things with us.
It's my understanding that's what these people would do. It's Ohio Geographic Reference Index Program.
I'll check on that, see.
OGRIP, OGRIP.
Where are they located, Linda, do you know?
That I do not know.
Is that, is it Logan, Ohio? I don't know if it's Logan.
I think so, I think.
Because I know, who is it, RCAP will come in and do that service, too, but they don't do it constantly, it's just, here it is, here's the setup, here's your basic system, and go do it.
Yeah, I think, I think this OGRIP runs a little bit differently, but.
I'll check it out.
I don't know a lot of details about it, so I can find out.
All right, two things, the leaf machine, you said it's broke?
It broke two weeks ago when we were halfway through the first week that we were using it, so it's, what'd you say, Donnie, about 35, 40, or 50 years old? Yeah, so.
I remember it broke last year, too.
Yes.
How much did one of those machines cost?
Wouldn't you just check on one, there was a used one for, what was it, 15,000 or 20,000, and a new one is probably 30, but I have to check and see.
Okay. And then number two, on the road to the ball field, is there like an expected start date on that, like do we have the purchase agreement and all that, like everything?
Yes, we have the purchase agreement, I'm just waiting, the only problem was, we were actually gonna do a closing on the property, but the homeowner, there was an issue with her mortgage, she was saying she paid cash for it, and her mortgage, she had listed as a mortgage, so we were waiting on her to get back to us to figure out what that happened, because we can't just close and give her money if she's got a mortgage on it, and back and forth, so we're waiting on that to see. The grant for junior sports, Eric, when's that gonna be announced? They march, so we won't know until March, because that, that part of that project is our match for that grant to, for junior sports to come through.
Okay.
J.C.?
I thought she was demoting the property.
No.
Buying it for what she purchased it for?
For how much?
35,000.
Any other questions for service director?
The start of Trinity, any word on that?
They're, they're working.
Last, no. The hospital?
They got tons of trucks down.
That's the water line. That's our water line.
Okay, I thought maybe they were starting some of that.
I was gonna say, I haven't seen anything else, that's our water line. Last I talked to them was three weeks ago, I think I announced that at the one council meeting, and they said any day now they were gonna get their final budget and go, and I haven't heard a beep yet since.
J.C.?
They get the spring street yet to fix that?
I do not think so, because we've been dealing with the leaves and all the stuff, they're just talking about wanting to start patching, I think you mentioned this week, so it's still on the list.
Any other questions? Move on to police chief, Matt Owens.
Good evening, council, monthly report for November, we had 414 calls that we answered, one SOB team call out, nine crashes, 27 arrests, one warrant served, three domestics, and 97 traffic stops. We had, we were contacted by the Ohio Attorney General's Office, who has recognized our department's community outreach programs, much of that effort being coordinated by Officer Greg Clark, and they asked that we consider putting together a, some sort of procedure for, in a training format, for other departments to use, so we were kind of happy to hear about that. And that's all we have.
And again, there's never too many pats on the back, the guys did a great job for the parade, handled the traffic and the people over here, so I'm sure everybody here is very pleased with our police department, thank you again. Hey, buddy, have any questions for Matt?
Just a comment, if I could, Matt, under your leadership, don't, don't, I mean, Greg gets a lot of the credit, but you, I remember talking to you about this, the outreach program when I got elected, and you said, let's try it, and I can't thank you guys enough, I'm so proud to think you were reached out to with the Attorney General's Office for our department to do a training for the state, incredible, thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Yeah, thank you, Matt. We'll move on to finance director, Nettie Walden.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thanks to Eric and everyone that helped with the turkey trot. I did go, I finished first, meaning I was the first one to leave. I was talking to a lady standing there while I took some pictures, and she said there, her family came from out of town, they were from Coal Rain, and that they came to do it as a family event, so it's not just our community that we reached out to on that. Thank everyone that helped. So I, everyone should have their copy of the budget in hand, if not, it's in your box. It's for the temporary budget for 2024, and we have to have that passed at the next meeting, so I can put it on the system, and we can do payroll and everything at the beginning of the year. The numbers are based on most of the needs for the first quarter, and meeting with the departments and what, what they would like to have during the first quarter, so it's, I'm not saying we're gonna do all that the first quarter, but that's what it's based on. And you can email me, too, or stop in if you have any questions, specific questions on it.
I have a question, so this has to be passed at the next meeting, we can't do it in January?
No. Unless nobody wants paid at the first of January.
And again, this is temporary, right?
It's temporary, it's for the first three months.
This is unbinding?
I mean, it'll be what's on the system for the first three months, then we'll have to do a permanent budget by April 1st.
The appropriations that we sent to the audit, then that's permanent?
Yes. I mean, these are, these are things that have to happen, I mean, the payroll and the basic expenditures that we need for the first three quarters of the operating year.
I mean, I have a question, I guess I could call you or email you on it, but I was curious if we could wait till January?
No, we can't.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you, Net.
You're welcome.
Move on to Planning, Jimmy. Excuse me, Mr. Murphy.
Uh, thanks, Jim. Just one thing for Council today, just to bring to your attention. Ordinance 202343, that's the ODOT Locals Roads Oil and Shale Program Funding Grant. We applied last year and we were lucky to get that, the tune of a grant for $500,000 for North Sugar Street. We're shooting for Thompson Drive this year. Jeremy mentioned that to me. He goes, maybe we can shoot for that. I think you all know where Thompson Drive is and terrible shape that is. Again, this particular grant, the way ODOT has it set up is that they have to be, I don't wanna say main roads, but heavily, heavily used roads in St. Clair's other than, not residential streets, but other ones other than nine and forty that are heavily, heavily used by oil and gas trucks and things. So again, last year we applied for North Sugar Street, that was approved. This year, we're applying for Thompson. There are certain tests that have to be met. They grade their grants on the number of the daily traffic on those roads, how much truck traffic, because again, they wanna know, was it heavily used by oil and gas? And how many well pads are within five miles and how many injection wells are within ten miles? So when I contacted Bellamar and then we worked, kind of reached out to ODNR to get the numbers, Thompson Drive does meet overall, it meets the daily traffic high point, it meets the truck traffic high point, uh, it meets the well pad high point. Injection well is kind of in the middle, closer to the top, but not quite the perfect score. So we're gonna shoot for that grant. I did reach out to ODOT to say, hey, you, we awarded us last year, we still have a chance this year. And they said, yeah, it's each year you can take it. It is very competitive, uh, but we're gonna shoot for it again. Um, it's a, at this point in time, it's a, just a little bit of investment. If we're successful, we can get as much as $500,000 of the project. If repaving and repairing Thompson Drive is more than that, then yes, we would be responsible. Uh, but if we could get a chunk of change like that, that's a, that's a good thing. So, um, that ordinance is set up as a, an emergency. If it was approved, uh, at the next meeting, that would be fine. But again, this is the benefit, the community gets us some, potentially some extra funds and this allows us to apply for that grant. So we're not tied down to anything at this point. And if there's any questions?
Do they have any questions?
Like that $500 for North Sugar. If that total amount isn't used, are you able to carry that over to like, say, Thompson or to maybe like Barton Road within the city limits?
It's, uh, it's project specific. So since we applied for, you know, North Sugar Street, that's all we could use it on. We'll probably end up spending more than the $500,000. Applied last year, the project actually starts next year, an ideal situation. So the cost will, unfortunately, they always go, go up, so.
So Barton Road, do you wonder we could also use within the city limits?
Uh, Barton Road, there's that potential. Uh, if it, uh, meets those criteria, you know, we could try that in the future. Barton Road, when it was repaired by, I can't remember the name of the company. It was one of the earlier oil and gas companies. They basically rebuilt that whole road. Uh, and it's still in great shape, which is a good thing. It wasn't a scent, I think it began with a G. I'm trying to remember.
They were the ones that wanted to do the traffic like their golf course.
Yeah.
They wanted to do the traffic.
Yeah, yep. And, uh, that road is really held up. Even the section that leaves the city, Austinville, kinda half in the city, half outside where that bank and parcel is on the right, they actually built shelves, uh, basically to hold up the road and knock on wood, it's, it's done real well. There's just cracks in it a little bit and that's all.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions for Tom? Okay, thank you, Tom. If you want to cap the committee's finance, Mr. Inzenza.
Uh, just like Annette said, uh, 2024 recap of the temporary appropriation budget. Everybody got a coffee? I really ask for everybody to look at it line for line. If you got any questions, uh, let's reach out to Annette, to Jeremy and, uh, just look at it pretty good.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Don. Move on to Utilities, Paraveller.
Uh, we had a meeting tonight. We went over the billing, the collections and billing, um, and that's the only thing that we have in there tonight. Just nothing more than that.
Any questions for anyone? Okay, move on to Police, Mr. Smith.
Uh, Police Committee met a couple of weeks ago and wasn't much discussed, although we always ask the chief, uh, what the police need, what their needs are. We'll continue to explore that, uh, each meeting and decide where we can get the funds for whatever he needs. But we do have money in there in the appropriations already, but there's always some extra things that they may need. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mike. Any comments for Mike? Okay, Mike, anything on north side streets?
Uh, no, maybe, maybe next meeting I'll have something on that. Have some people contacting me.
Okay. J.C., anything on south side streets?
No report.
Anything on safety?
No report.
Okay, Beth's not here for Building and Grounds, Planning Commission, Christie.
Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission will meet on December 11th, next week at 6:00 P.M. for final approval on the Cumberland Trail Fire District, who will be presenting their plans for their final site plan approval. The main part of their project is the construction of two new additions and reconfiguration of the interior. Also, the DORA Committee will meet on January 23rd at 6:00 P.M. here in Council Chambers. All members of the public are encouraged to attend.
And I'll just mention one thing. If anyone does wanna look at the plans for the Fire Department, we have a larger set of plans here, so just give me a call and I'll make sure you can take a look at this.
Thank you, Christie. Anybody have any other comments or questions? Okay, Fire District, Linda?
I have really no report except I will echo what Christie had to say about that meeting as well as our regular meeting, which is Wednesday, December 13, 8:15 at the firehouse
Okay, thank you, Amanda. Recreation, Christie.
Um, I would, um, I'm going to defer to Eric for the rec report tonight since he's here, but I did wanna thank him and the whole rec department staff. They did an extremely amazing job with the turkey trot and everything, everything. They just put a hundred and ten percent in everything they do down there. And it really shows by the growing numbers of participation in all of their sports that, that they are taking care of. There's not going to be a December rec board meeting. The next rec board meeting will be January 18th at 4:30 at the Rec Center. And I will turn it over to Eric now.
Eric? Thanks, Christie. And, uh, I just wanna say thank you to, uh, Council for, you know, everything that you guys do and the way that you have treated the, uh, you know, the recreation department. And Jeremy, uh, Mayor, Annette, everyone, uh, thank you for everything. It doesn't go unnoticed by us. Chief, you know, you guys are always there anytime that we need anything and Don, I need the same for you and your department. So, uh, thank you to everyone for everything, uh, that you guys do for us. It doesn't go unnoticed. Uh, the turkey trot, it was a fantastic day. We had three hundred and eight, uh, total people show up for the day. You know, it was, it was good weather again. Uh, you know, we had people from Alabama, Michigan. You know, I don't know if they were in visiting family or whatever, but, uh, you know, there were a lot of people here and they, they loved the, uh, they loved the course. So we got a lot of compliments that day. But, uh, it was, you know, for the junior sports project, which I don't know if, uh, if you guys have seen it yet, but the field is fantastic. The fence is done, the dugouts are done. We just have to put the roofs on the dugouts, but it looks absolutely fantastic. And, uh, you know, this race was going for a new scoreboard out there because we didn't have enough money to do it. So, uh, I believe that we raised, you know, fifty-six hundred dollars from the, uh, um, five K and, you know, we were a little bit short of, uh, you know, the purchase of a new scoreboard. But the next morning I woke up to a phone call and Chick-fil-A has graciously donated the rest of the money, um, to us for the scoreboard, so. Yes, but thank you to everyone that was there and, uh, yeah, we'll look forward to it next year.
Where you gather? Is everybody called the turkey chicken trunks? Nice, very nice.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. You did a great job down there too. Okay, uh, Christie, have anything else? J.C.?
I should, I should have added and I am so sorry, but I, I do also, I don't wanna neglect the police department because they, they were there and I know Matt always volunteers his time and it was Thanksgiving morning, so. And Jeremy was out too, um, making sure I knew where the finish line was. He was quick to point that out. But I found, I found it.
Of this direction.
Thank you to all of you also.
I thought maybe we might get by this meeting without being harassed, but apparently Okay, J.C., question?
Yeah, I have a question for you. You guys gonna do a New Year's Eve bash or is that?
I, I would like to, yeah. We're, it's a little short notice now, but, uh, maybe we'll get something out there.
I was just wondering, that's par for the course for you.
Yeah, yeah.
Usually you wait till the week before before you.
You take your airwork under pressure.
I know, I know.
Everybody's for a game tonight.
Yeah.
I didn't have something to think so far, but I got, I got a couple of minutes yet. I can still. Okay, we'll move on to Park District. Linda, do you have anything?
No, I have no report other than the next regularly scheduled meeting is next Monday, December 11th, 4:30 P.M. at Preferred Legacy Bank.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Okay, that concludes the council committee reports. Uh, we'll move on to ordinances, resolutions, Law Director, Linda.
Uh, you have three pieces of legislation before you tonight. Two are up for the first reading, one is up for the second reading. We'll start with the first reading. We have ordinance number 202342 and this is the ordinance making the temporary appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city for the period of January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. And as you heard, Annette said that she'd like it passed by next meeting, so if you wanna do this, it's just a first read. That's fine.
Okay, Jake, can we read, uh, ordinance 202342?
Ordinance number 202342, an ordinance to make temporary appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the City of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio, for the period of January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024 and declaring an emergency.
Okay, emergency language has been put into this and they're requesting that. Does anyone wish to take any further action on that this evening? That will be the first reading on that. We'll move on to Resolution 202343.
202343 is the resolution authorizing the Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the city to file an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for local roads, oil and shale program funding for the rehabilitation of Thompson Drive and declaring an emergency. And we have a, uh, deadline to meet on that one.
Okay, Jake, can you read 202343?
Resolution number 202343, a resolution authorizing the Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of St. Clairsville to file an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for local roads, oil and shale program funding for the rehabilitation of Thompson Drive and declaring an emergency.
Okay, again, this is requested, uh, for emergency legislation and there is a deadline on it, so would anybody wish?
I believe that the rules require an ordinance as a resolutions to be read on three separate readings, be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll take a roll, so we'll consider this emergency.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Inzenza?
Yes.
All members are okay.
Okay, it will be considered an emergency. We will read it for the final time.
Resolution number 202343, a resolution authorizing the Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of St. Clairsville to file an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for local roads, oil and shale program funding for the rehabilitation of Thompson Drive and declaring an emergency.
Any motion to pass 202343? Second. J.C.? Take a roll, all of us.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Inzenza?
Yes.
All members are okay.
Okay, 202343, it then passed. Move on to second reading, Linda?
Uh, up for second reading is Resolution 202340. That's the resolution creating the position of GIS Coordinator and declaring an emergency.
Okay, Liz, uh, again, this is the second reading. Does anyone wish to take, uh, any further action other than, um, second reading?
Can we bring up some questions on that?
Sure.
Okay, I mean, uh, one of my questions is, what does this position be post-advanced? I mean, is it as a coordinator, an analyst?
Basically the coordinator, the GIS manager, they'll be taking care of our GIS system and shooting our GIS. We've actually had two people reach out, or three actually reach out if, if this goes that are interested in the position.
Okay, so like this, the seventy-five thousand, there's a broad range on that between coordinators and analysts. How did we come up with the seventy-five thousand?
That was based off of what we found and just the research coming through and then even what I just verified with what the Belmont County is paying there.
Okay, 'cause I know Belmont County is the analyst. Like coordinators, a lot of times start off in the fifties and, uh, I just didn't know how we come up with the seventy-five.
It's basically the requirements that we have for somebody that are gonna, that are gonna need to be able to run the system and go through it. They're not just gonna be somebody that's fresh out of school, it's gonna be somebody that needs to be able to manage the system and come through, upgrade it, take us to the next level and input all the data and everything.
Or rose by any other name, no matter what you call it, it's the same job. Right. So.
And then, uh, as far as the GIS itself, which one are we going with? Like the GIS core? Are we on mobile? Are we going, uh, the web?
We have actually both. We have the, with the ArcGIS, with the software, we have a mobile one on the web that we can have access to. We already have, what do we have? Six licenses for that that we use for various departments for access to it. And then we've got three, three editors that are online, uh, on through. So I'm one of them, uh, Tom's one of them, Anita's one of them, and then our current, uh, consultant has access to those two to be able to edit.
So there'd be like computers in some of the trucks where the?
Very happy they can bring it up. Most of them can bring it up on their laptop or the tablets, like some of the tablets we have. Also, uh, one of the guys brings it up on his phone, just his, his city phone and then you can bring it up on his, uh, it's just a website. So as long as you have the user criteria and the password for it, you can have access to it.
So we need no software, no, no?
We already bought it.
It's all paid for and, okay.
We got it. And even this, even the survey software, uh, and survey equipment, we bought that two years ago when I got here.
So the, the people that we're using right now, that we're paying a monthly fee to, what are the, who are they called? Votus or? What are they, what is their, what are they doing? What is their?
Okay, so they'll help with updates. They're doing some of the updates that we need to get done. They manage the system coming through, going through. Uh, Tom, what else, what else does it, do they get into?
Well, when any, when any department needs changes or make changes to, whether it's polls, whether it's utility accounts, zoning information, um, they can assist in updating that. You know, in my, I say my department, but it's me. Um, you know, I can update the permits myself, but there's a lot of other departments that have a slew of other information.
Whenever utility, whenever there's new accounts created or new. Whenever utility, whenever there's new accounts created or new things, like just this whole project that we're doing now, could be the gentleman or whoever, or lady or whoever ends up being, could be out there shooting the new lines and actually having accurate maps where these lines are instead of based off of aerial photographs with hand drawing on them and going through and going, well, we think it's here, but we don't know.
But as far as the GIS itself goes, that does nothing for locating these lines that the EPA is saying we need. We still got to locate those.
We still have to locate those and go through it, but the data that they want with some of it, the length, the latitude and longitude, those are things that we can't do, we don't have the ability to. We have that survey equipment, we can go out there, but I don't, nobody has time to do it.
Yeah, I understand that, so why wasn't the contractor?
They only are contracting out, they only get so much time in there and we only have so much money in the budget. That's where the same thing we went through with the wastewater superintendent, when we were contracting that work out and coming back in and saving money and having somebody full-time to be able to do all the stuff that we need instead of just these little pieces that we need and be able to get it up to the next level.
Okay, so I guess the question I have is, let's just say four and a half, five years from now, we're complete.
Never be complete.
Even in a small area like St. Clairsville?
Nope. Think about everything that we're doing right now, all this stuff.
Yeah, it's a lot.
I mean, we've got, we've got not even half of our water lines that are gonna be replaced now, we still have the other 60, 70% that need done, and our sewer system is at least 40 to 60 years old, if not more.
So.
This is not going to be a one-and-done, little fast project, that's why we've gone to the point now, we're progressing past having a consultant do it, we need somebody on staff to do this, to help us out.
So is this necessary right away, or is this something that, you know, contractor, Annette said 71,000 is when we pay the contractor, can we still have the contractor, which is cheaper than what we would be paying somebody?
But we don't have, they don't have the time to give us what we need.
The EPA wants it what, by October?
Is there somebody out there that would give us the time and what we need?
That's what we're trying to do, position-wise, that's why we're trying to create a position to have somebody full-time, 40 hours a week, that can do what we need them to do. Think about a consultant, it's like you guys, I mean, if you hire somebody to come out, they're not working just for you, they're working for other multiple entities, and sometimes we don't get the service that we need. Now, I mean, that company's been great to work with, it's just we need to take the next steps and get up, and this EPA mandate that they're coming through is the perfect launching point to get started on this.
They give us a deadline?
The EPA, yeah.
I did see on the news where, from the, from Washington DC.
That's a whole different one, the 10-year with the lead thing?
Yeah, 10-year.
That's a whole different one, this one, this is why they're trying to do that, to make the determination to see actually how bad the lead is everywhere. So the feds are coming down on the state EPA, the state EPA is coming down on everyone doing this. I know several of our employees live in other districts, water districts, and some of them are sending out postcards, we're working on, we're gonna do that, help out with that stuff too, but we've already started trying to get it updated and go through it, but I've talked to the EPA about it and it's like, this is almost the impossible task, I said, how are these entities that aren't doing these water line projects, how do they even know how this is going on? Because you've still got a lot of entities that are still working on hand-drawn maps. If you look at some of our maps, it'll actually have a locator for a curb box, and it'll say, "Five feet north of the first tree in front of the house." Well, the tree don't last that long sometimes, and then we actually had an entity once, one of our guys couldn't tell what north and south was, so sometimes he would say, "Five feet north of the north end of the house," and it's really not, it's the south end of the northeast edge, I mean, he just, this poor guy couldn't tell directions at all. So a lot of times, we're out in the field trying to find things and we can't find it and going through it, so this is something that is, when Trinity came in, one of the first things they asked, can your utilities handle it? This is what development wants, we've got a meeting this Friday with a developer that's wanting to talk about extending utilities and things too. This is the information, if we have this information from this on the system, we spoon-feed them and go through it.
I guess the next big question is, Annette, do we have the money and where will it come from?
It'll come from four different departments, it's on the breakdown.
I've seen that on the GIS, 25% here, I think 25%.
Which is basically how we pay for the consultant now, we take it out of multiple departments because we use it everywhere. The only one that is different is the street department, because they're not an enterprise fund, they don't generate their own funds, they're supplied from the general fund, so that's the one that's gonna come from the general.
And then like the contractor, I noticed a lot of their monthly bills might range from anywhere from $145 to $42,000 a month.
Just depends on what they were doing and how busy they got with things and the things that were popping up.
Okay, well that takes care of a lot of my questions, appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions?
What are the other communities doing? Did everyone get the same mandate?
Yes, everyone got the same mandate, a lot of them are just coming out, like I said, some of them are sending out postcards and they're having people self-assess them, and some of them have been further ahead than we are with knowing with some of their stuff, like the county, I talked to the county about it, they said we've got one area that we're concerned about that we don't have anything, but everything else, we pretty much know what's there, what's there, why, when it was done, when it was installed and everything. We don't have those records, I don't know why, but we didn't, I don't know if it was something from decades ago, no one worried about it, but you know, some of these things, just like, we didn't think we had as many galvanized lines on East Main as we do, and we're finding them all over the place.
So are all the homes on East Main right now walnut, are they already done and ready to be put into?
The north side, the north side is already connected to the new water line, the old water line on the north side is abandoned.
But all these galvanized lines or whatever, they're done?
No.
They could be entered into the system if we had?
They're, yeah, well, the information's being there, but we don't have like the length, the latitude, longitude, and those kinds of things, we need to go out and do that, and that's been what we've been trying to do, and the only problem is, every time we schedule something to do that, we have another water line break, we have another emergency, we have another project, and that's where it's coming in at, that it's like, okay, it's time to step up and go to the next step, here's the next step is to get somebody on board that can do these things for us.
J.C.?
Just a one-man show or is it gonna need help? Most of the time it'll be a one-man show, but if not, we can actually come in and maybe take some of our guys that are, once we switch to the county water, we're gonna have five guys, I don't think all of them are gonna stay, I've talked to a couple of them, one's got some health issues, he'll probably retire, another one likes midnights, he would have to come to days, he doesn't like days, I don't know if he's a vampire or what, but it's just one of those things, so we'll have some extra manpower that will be able to do it, but they're not trained. I mean, they're gonna be, I don't know if anyone knows anything about survey, but there's a position in surveying called the idiot stick, and it's the guy that goes out with the stick at the end, and the guy shoots his electronic to it, and he says, "Okay, now move," and all he does is just move, and he moves the rod around. Yeah, that's what I'm. So. When you're surveying, you gotta have two guys, it's not a one-man show. It is with the GIS. Okay. Because literally you have the receiver and you just put the receiver down as long as you're connecting to the satellites. So ours is fancy and you can. Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
So no other tools needed, no vehicle needed, no, no other software?
Maybe a vehicle, but we've got one or two that we're trying to rehab, that was the one that J.C. was mentioning, to get the rec center and other vehicle back, so we've got two trucks that we're trying to get repaired, minor things wrong with them, we're gonna see what happens, that's gonna be something in the new budget to see, see what we can do and then roll for there, but if not, we've got two vehicles up here that we share with the rec and everybody else, so we would just use that and then.
And if we would go ahead and hire somebody, that contractor is gone, it's not gonna be no three, four months of the contractor.
Nope, and that's why at the beginning of the year is the perfect time to do this, because our contract with them was only for not to exceed 75,000 for this year. And don't get me wrong, the contractor is great, it's just, we need more, and I don't know if they're gonna be able to give it to us.
And there's, like Linda was saying already, or there's, is there help out there that we could?
I'm gonna look into that and see, but even just talking to the Belmont County GIS, like she mentioned before, they're a one-man show too, so there's no way that they can even split time with us, not even logistics of two different government agencies sharing somebody like that. I know our cap has this where they'll come in and help you set up the system and start to do things, but we're beyond that, I mean, we've got an up and running system now going through it, that's what I'm saying, we've got everything in place, I just need more time from somebody to start doing some of the things we need done.
What kind of money would we be able to get from the OEP A grant?
For?
From this GIS person?
The GIS? Not none that I know of.
Oh, you had that email out.
What email was that?
Yeah, saying, as noted last night in the city, in the meeting, the city's wanting to get a grant or loan from the OEP A, and we can't do that until we like hire somebody.
Oh, no, what I meant there was, if we would have anything going through it, like if there's any other grants or loans coming up and we're not complying with what the EPA is mandating us to get done?
Then we don't get it.
We're not gonna be eligible for these things coming through, so if we don't get somebody in this position to help us run this, to get this information to them, we're gonna be left high and dry. I apologize on the wording on that, that should've been a little clearer.
Any other questions coming in?
I guess I'm just confused, I don't understand how other communities are sending out cards, but we have to spend all this money to hire someone, I don't, that does not make sense to me.
It's not just for this project, it's for the whole GIS system to go up and update it and bring it up and keep moving it, going forward. This is just one of the springboard moments of, hey, here it is, this is a major requirement that the EPA is throwing on us, we need to get on board and start getting it done, and no one has had the time to do it.
So we've spent 71,000 part-time this year, and if we were to hire that same person full-time as a consultant, we'd be spending $150,000.
Well, it wasn't that much, was it?
It would be an awful lot to have someone.
It was 110, 115?
Okay.
That's with benefits.
Okay, but this guy that we would hire as a full-time city employee would basically be a bargain as opposed to paying a consultant to be there full-time. You know what I'm saying? The guy if he had part-time, we've spent 71,000.
Yeah, yeah, so for what we're saying, plus benefits, we would have somebody 40 hours a week instead of just?
Right, 20 or whatever.
No, I wouldn't even say we're getting 20, I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm happy with what they've done, we just need to take the next step with this whole system to upgrade our stuff so that we don't have issues like we had with the Westin Waterline out in Reservoir Road where we dug a hole because we thought the utility was there and it wasn't, and we had to move it, and then, you know, Reservoir Road was shut down even longer because we had to dig another hole, and we're getting a change order from the contractor on it.
There's no way to get a contractor or a contractor to do more hours?
I don't think so unless we're gonna spend a lot more money on it, but even that, we're still not gonna have somebody that's full-time.
So if we looked at this, and if we were in a different position as a city and you looked at it and said, "We absolutely can't afford this," just say, just say we were in a different state and you say, "There's no way we can do this," what would be our, what would we do? What's our fallback, the contractor? The same thing as we have been doing?
Yeah.
No, we're not gonna go bottom up, you know, on, we're not gonna completely drop the ball, I'm just saying if we, what, you know, if we had to make it work without creating that position, what would we do?
I don't know if we could get the EPA stuff done, now the GIS stuff, we could continue to what we're going, just piecemealing in as we come through, and then we're still finding things, I mean, I found another whole section of galvanized line that we haven't confirmed yet up on Franklin Street, there's just stuff that we're finding that wasn't?
I get it, I'm just asking what your plan would be if we looked at the budget and said, "We absolutely can't do this, I don't know what we're gonna do, but we can't do that because we can't afford it," what are we doing there? That's what I'm asking.
I don't know, to be honest, I don't know because I don't know how much more time I can give if I'm doing 60, 70 hours a week now, I'm not talking pay a week, you know, last week was my worst week and it was only 40 hours because I was on vacation, and I still came in for two hours on Friday to help with the water line break and look and make sure everything was going on, what was there.
And I have to tell you, the EPA does not take any excuses, when they tell you this needs done, if we roll around October and say, "We just couldn't afford to do it," there's gonna be fines, there's gonna be sanctions as far as, well, you don't qualify for any more grants, I mean, I just feel like, you know, I don't like to see us spend money, but if we're already spending 71,000 and we can get a full-time person whose absolute dedication is just to the city, there may be a grant come up at some point that would pay for basically what they're being paid because they saved this money on somewhere else, I mean, again, it's.
Even like the grant that Tom's going after for that, the traffic study, things like that, that's all things that they could be working on too and going through it.
I understand, it's just huge, it's a $40,000 difference between what we paid someone and creating this position, and I'm just, I'm just asking practically, as a city, if you, if you, if we were in a different position, you looked at that and said, "We absolutely can't do it," because there are other places who I'm sure are in that position, what are they doing? You know?
I don't know.
Did the EPA state that we would be fined or we would not be eligible for grants or
anything?
They haven't officially stated anything like that, but this is coming down, like you said, the feds are maintaining, are mandating that all lead lines be replaced within 10 years, so this is coming from on high down and it's trickling down to us. But, I mean, has anyone been on and seen the capabilities of what we already have set up? I mean, we're not a basic system yet, so it's not like, you know, just a general map coming out and putting something in. I mean, I would love to show you guys sometime all the stuff that we have in there, what we've implemented just since I've been here.
Could you bring somebody in to speak at a council meeting to kind of address what?
Yeah, well, the problem is you start bringing the consultant in, we're trying to replace their, they're not gonna be.
Okay.
They're not gonna be too happy.
I understand where you're coming from, and I understand GIS, and I hope you think these are all fair.
No, no, they are, and I have no problem with them, I'm just, just trying to say, look, last council meeting.
This is a big, this is a major project.
Uh-huh, it is, we have a lot of major projects coming up with things, and I don't ask unless I, unless I really think we need it, because there's plenty of other things that pop up that I shoot down before it even gets to you guys, and level-wise, and say, no, we're not doing that, no, we can't afford this, no, we're not doing it. Believe me, I'm very conscious on the budget, because I get asked about it all the time.
Understood, like I said, I just hope you think these are all fair questions and we're just trying to get?
Nope, I know.
Trying to get a grasp on this.
Don't worry, you need to do and go through it, I hope I'm answering.
Oh, yeah, very helpful.
How many hours does our consultant work now, a month, average? I'd have to look, Tom, can you make a guess on that? It's variable. I mean, you saw the bill, I mean, one bill was 42,000 for one month and one bill was?
125.
Yeah, I mean, you know. Or just how many hours are they working at here, how much do they contract? Well, I mean, his, what did I say in that email, his rate was what, 55 or something?
Project manager was 220 an hour. 140 an hour with the project manager, 220 an hour.
So, take 70,000 divided by 120, you know, just to give it the lower number, and that's about how many hours they've been working on this.
Excuse me, I'm just gonna throw out my opinion, it may be my business nature, I suppose there are probably some very good places to contract help to do things of this nature, but I'm thinking in the back of my mind, we're dealing with somebody with EPA that wants so much accuracy, and I don't know how much you can count on a contractor to have the desire to make sure that they're as accurate as possible rather than petting corners, and the reason I think this way is, I'm gonna go back to the number of years reason that I, I think this way is, I'm gonna go back to a number of years, uh, my, years ago, my brother had a, a business, they had a Dodge H C out of the east end of town, they were gonna make an addition to the shop, so they checked what they, where the lines were supposed to be with the county, and they wanted to make sure they weren't gonna break up into water lines or any issues, and they got it clear, the water line was supposed to be sixty feet above where they were gonna cut into the ground for the new building. While we, they had brought in a bulldozer and they were cutting the foundation in, and all of a sudden they get the water trickling, and they found out that the contractor that had put those water lines in, put them sixty feet in because they could cut, shortcut it and use less pipe, and still charge the same amount of money, so that's my suspicion, and if we don't have somebody on staff here that's got the?
Real accountability.
Well, the accountability and the, they've got some input into what's going on and how, uh, the accuracy of what they're doing and how accurate it's gonna be, uh, I think maybe we may be more dependable on somebody that, uh?
Anita, how many times a day do you use the GIS system?
Oh, tons, tons.
Just guess, twenty, forty?
Probably about twenty times, especially now with this water line, I have to.
Tom?
Uh, I have it open all day long, it's not admitted to the day, I don't have it open.
And Mike, you're doing the same thing?
Oh, that's, that's all understood, I see that, uh, given the Jim's point, ten years ago, the equipment was accurate within fifty feet, today, it's accurate within a half of an inch.
Yeah.
Seventy-five thousand dollars a year ought to be enough incentive to do your job right. I do understand you use it every day, I'm just kind of asking, is this something we need right now? Because we got roads to pave, we got a lot of things, like you said, a lot of major projects, this is what's in the back of my head right now is, can we do without it for another year and put that money somewhere else right now? Uh, that's just what we're trying to gather and get our, get our hands around.
My pro, my, my thought on that is, the EPA's given us a deadline, that we've got a different situation, it's gonna have to be done within a year, and I, I don't know, I just, I guess I have?
Not in months.
I, I have more faith in somebody that is an employee here that maybe takes some pride in the work that they're doing and dependent on a contractor, and I'm not saying the contractor, but a good contractor.
How many utility locates do we do in a week?
That's just my opinion, I, I think maybe?
No, I'm not even talking emergency locates, that's a whole nother thing, but just regular locates for the gas company, uh, any contractor, anybody that comes through.
Forty, fifty?
Yeah, and what happens if we're not marking things correctly and somebody hits a utility line?
That's just my opinion.
Well, how about we call this OEP?
Yeah, I'll call them.
Yeah, and see just what they do, and just see what it is they do.
Our system is well past the initial stages of what?
Yeah, that's, that's?
I, I have no problem calling them, I said I call them.
Yeah, just see while?
Just like I called the GIS guy from county too, and discussed it with him.
Okay, if there's no other comments or questions, we'll go on with the second reading of, uh, ordinance 202340.
Resolution number twenty?
I'm sorry.
Resolution. Resolution number 202340, a resolution creating the position of GIS coordinator and declaring an emergency.